And we'll inquire.
We have the ballot language, so we'll take a look at that and let you know.
Item 24, accept written possession statement of local government liability pool on the Collin Ramirez matter and discuss follow-up of public comment. Oh, I, okay, I haven't had a chance to read this. The Wyoming Local Government Liability Pool is a self-insured liability fund made up of various Wyoming governmental entities and provides liability coverage for governmental entities across the state of Wyoming. When governmental claims and lawsuits are filed against members of our liability pool, the LGLP provides a defense of those matters. Albany County through the Board of County Commissioners of Albany is a member of the local government liability pool. The public is aware of a fatal shooting which occurred on November 4th, 2018 involving Deputy Sheriff Derek Colling of the Albany County Sheriff's Office and Robbie Ramirez. At this time, the LGLP anticipates the filing of a governmental claim and/or lawsuit against one or more employees, elected and/or appointed officials of Albany County as a result of the incident. Due to the anticipation, anticipated litigation, the Board of County Commissioners employees elected and appointed officials have been requested by legal counsel to refrain from giving their opinions or discussing their factual knowledge of this fatal shooting with the public or the media. LGLP's position on the matter is not unique. It is standard protocol with LGLP as well as other commercial liability insurance carriers that when an incident occurs which will likely end up in litigation, that the government entity and its representatives are asked to refrain from discussing the facts of the matter. Go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair and Commissioners, so as we anticipated from our last discussion on this matter, that we would be prohibited from talking about the specifics of the case. However, I have met with Commissioner Jen, Chairperson, pardon me, Jens, as well as individuals with the liability pool to kind of vet this out and how to proceed. And I think many of the Commissioners are aware during the legislative session, I did reach out to our local delegation for state representatives to see about presenting a interim topic for legislators to discuss officer-involved shootings and statutorily how that is mandated. Unfortunately, that did not go forward as an interim topic with the Joint Judiciary or other committees. However, it still remains statewide, this is an issue, not just here locally in Albany County. As you're aware, and you've read in the newspaper, there have been several other officer-involved shootings that have spanned throughout the state of Wyoming as recently as just this past weekend in Cheyenne. Most of those shootings underlying them are different varying issues and what has transpired. So the suggestion was if we were to form an ad hoc committee in order to look at issues and shootings that occur in the state of Wyoming, providing a report and statistics and recommendations potentially to our legislators to bring forth to the state of how processes may be changed and have that dialogue more involving issues instead of just focusing on an individual shooting being more global. I'd be remiss if I didn't also, in light of this conversation, discuss the efforts that are going on within Albany County with our Mental Health Board right now. We are looking towards how we address mentally ill individuals in our criminal justice system and our various systems within the court system. That involves not only our involuntary commitments through Title 25, also our Title VII, when they're in the system, an individual is of not guilty by reason of insanity. We also see mental illness as it spans into Department of Family Services when kids are taken away from families of individuals who are mentally ill, as well as into our vulnerable adult population, we are seeing individuals that are mentally ill. So as it, as you look at these issues, I think you can break it down that there's prevention, and that is going to be addressed through mental health issues through, I think, the grant, grant you just recently received from the state and the Department of Health. And I believe you're about to appoint a coordinator, and you're looking for a coordinator to deal with the prevention issues. You have at this time the Mental Health Board that's dealing with how do we address all of the issues once you're in the system, the court system? And so I guess the last remaining is how we address or statewide deal with issues of mentally ill and practices of officers when shooting is involved. So I would suggest to this committee, to you as the Commissioners, that we form an ad hoc committee. Sheriff O'Malley has been out of town, so I haven't had an opportunity to visit with him about that. But it would not involve county officials on this committee. The recommendation is the committee would essentially be comprised of retired law enforcement agents from state of Wyoming, throughout the state of Wyoming, as well as from other states to look globally in the United States as to what practices are being done and how we can look at our state of Wyoming and looking at various issues that are occurring with officers and in those situations. I am in the process, if that's something you're amenable to as a board, of drafting a resolution. Of course, I have to run it by our liability pool, but I've had the preliminary discussions about how this would look and how we can proceed at a level, and still from that report, be able to bring that forward to our state legislators, assuming there would be recommendations that could be implemented statewide.
Is there any other discussion?
So do you want me to proceed with that or not, or what are your thoughts?
Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would. I think that sounds like a reasonable set of steps to go forward in light of the statement and the problems we have discussing.
Okay.
I agree completely. And the main reason is that it might be challenging for the public to understand, but we Commissioners, the sheriffs, even the prosecutors have rules and statute that may be antiquated or maybe kind of not workable. I mean, I don't, it's not my area of expertise, but I'm learning a lot, and it's frustrating. And, and so I want to see the legislature address it, because we're pretty boxed in by statute at the county level. This is a topic for, and an issue for the legislature to deal with. We don't have home rule, we don't necessarily get to fix these things county by county. The legislature imposes these things on us, all of us, as county elected officials. So it's a shame that an incident like this has to identify or highlight the shortcomings of what the system is, and then we, the government is typically reactive, not proactive. It's, it's just the way that it is in all issues.
I would also recommend as we move forward and, and give the committee the ability to look statewide, we also have to look at what, what suggestions or recommendations and what the financial impact would be and the cost of that to change if they're recommending certain things, you know, as a result of this coming back with a report. I would recommend that we give to the committee that authority to do as much as they can and we not dictate who they invite in, how that would look as a committee, and let them have that autonomy. But it would not involve county officials. We would just have the report that we can review and pass along to your other Commissioners with your association and others for potential review and implementation.
By that you mean the Prosecutors Association and?
All of the associations, any, you know, that they take a look at this report. And that's why when, as you well were aware, I was asking for an interim study to be done in order for a report to be brought forward to see what comparison of other states and what do they do in these issues when there's officer-involved shootings, how it's handled, so that that could be recommendations for future pieces of legislation.
Are you saying that since the legislature declined to entertain this as an interim topic, that we will send them some information as though it were one with a bow wrapped around it, so they have some things to start with?
Yes. Now, I'm not sure this is unfunded, so this is volunteers coming together with a report and recommendation. So I will draft the resolution, kind of giving them the charge of what the ad hoc committee would do. If it is your desire, you know, from that report, it'd be written volunteers. I'm not serving on the committee, obviously, so someone's going to have to do the writing of whatever their recommendations would be. So we're asking that committee to not only provide you the data, statistics, comparisons, all the research. My hope is that potentially, as you know, I partner a lot with the University of Wyoming, maybe we can reach out to see if they would assist with the committee.
I know from conversations that I've had with County Commissioners Association, they're very interested in this.
Okay. All right. So I'll bring back for your consideration a resolution at your next meeting after I've reviewed it with our liability pool, and I believe what we're proposing would be acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25, oh, no, we, I'm.
Can we, can we say anything?
I was just in the way of discussion, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
That's fine, you're there, have at it.
Okay. I ran across an article that I was given when I went to the CIT workshop many years ago, and it will indicate how behind we are, because this was in 2004, and it indicates a lawsuit where, of course, the police officers were cleared and then civil suit did follow, and the whole basis of their decision in the court was that there was not one single word said to de-escalate. This is an excellent article. It was written by a Chicago Chief of Police, and he was the one that gave the presentation at the time. He talked about less liability suits, less officer injuries, and of course, less injuries to the mentally ill. I also want to, I don't know, it may have been the way you said it, Peggy, I was kind of concerned when you said just former police officers or law enforcement people. I think it's important that there be some community members, not just law enforcement people. I feel like my position with the mental illness, the National Alliance on Mental Illness and what I've done with that should have some, some input. There's other people that are very knowledgeable that aren't necessarily former law enforcement. And so I, I think having those kind of people on the committee is very important. Anyway, I just would like to give you a copy of this, I think it's really relevant. Did I misunderstand you or?
No. If I, Madam Chair, if I could address that concern. When we were discussing this and having the discussions, it would be appropriate at this time to hear from former law enforcement because they're aware of certifications, they're aware of trainings, they're aware of items outside of Wyoming. And so what the intent was to bring it forward, and, and what that committee would do is invite in for public input at the appropriate times as they so desire as a committee. And the reason I believe change occurs is it has to come within, within law enforcement and within prosecutors and everyone. And I understand that the community, community has come forward now with concerns, and we're listening, but we've got to have the law enforcement to be tasked with looking at these items internally and ensure their, the voice of the public will be heard, but I, I believe it needs to bring about others to bring forth and from within to make those changes. There was already a committee, an ACOP report that's already been disseminated, that was a public document, that was of the committee, of the community. We have other items of public comments that were brought forward. So I think it's time for the officers and others in law enforcement to come forward to kind of brainstorm and to look within and how to move forward. The concepts of de-escalation and everything are common out there to know about, and the, the committee would be comprised of individuals outside who have been officers and within the state of Wyoming, retired officers. And I believe that report would be, but there will be an opportunity for public input as they see fit.
Thank you. I'm Carla Provenz, I'm Executive Director of ACOP. Essentially, our position is that this needs to come from community because we've kind of allowed law enforcement to come up with their practices already, and really who's impacted by this is the community. We're being policed, and if we want to provide recommendations, I think we should get, be given the opportunity to do so. And although this is, we're moving in the right direction, I feel like ACOP has been listened to and the community's had a voice. It's kind of really the beginning of that discussion, and I think we should, I would, I would urge that we look into other practices other than an ad hoc committee, looking into community oversight boards that have kind of like community buy-in. So they, they elect the people that consist of these boards and therefore are their representatives, and they bring those ideas forth. And I think it's also important that those boards have some sort of power. Now, I understand the county might have some limitations in terms of what they can do, but I certainly think this is worth putting in more discussion with the community about what the community wants before we present this idea of an ad hoc committee of law enforcement, former law enforcement. I think if we continue these discussions, we bring this forward to the legislature, that would be amazing. I would love to be a part of that process, so would my organization. So I really just kind of urge you in really taking into account the community, because it's the community that's outraged and it's the community that's impacted. And if they're not a part of the process to the point in which they see legitimate, that might raise more concerns. But again, I do want to thank everybody here today that's been looking into doing something different, looking into progressing forward. So, thank you.
I'm sorry to keep doing re-dos, but just to let you know, quite frankly, we've heard from the public loud and clear, we have reports, we need law enforcement now to come together and to provide that information and suggestion, suggestions statewide to move forward. And I have every confidence in law enforcement and to reach out to the public. You know, no matter what on this issue, I've been attacked personally, everybody gets attacked personally on this issue, and I'm sure it'll end up on the news and people will start their social media. We've got to have the opportunity to talk, and change comes from within, and we've heard the public loud and clear. But right now, I think it's time for law enforcement to come together, and you'd be rather surprised what law enforcement can come up with in looking at the issues and identifying, and from a statewide, what we can do as law enforcement. But at this point, again, I believe we need to leave it to a committee to bring that forward. However, if you tell me as Commissioners I'm to put on it, I can tell you right now, from the attacks I receive and other officers receive online from this ACOPS and social media, it's very hard to put aside the personal attacks that we hear to focus on the issues at hand, and that's what we need to do. Focus on statewide how we deal with issues and how we move forward as a group statewide and not just our community. The community can be invited in, but unfortunately, from public comments, the attacks are real. And I know, as I sit here, I know what will happen today on this camera and others who sit behind and write attacks about everything we do when we're trying to make a change. So that's why I think right now for officers who are retired and officers to come forward and let them, I've had an opportunity to speak with some of those retired officers who practiced in California, and they are familiar with community policing, they're familiar with the different boards and that, and I believe let them come forward with recommendations of what the issues are and for legislators to be involved.
Well, the thing that I would say, Peggy, is that the retired officers are part of the community and not segregated group. They are part of our community. And so we are incorporating as many possibilities as we can, but I agree 100% that law enforcement needs to have an opportunity to have some interest there and begin to make some change.
I mean, the offense of just an officer being in the room, that other people feel unsafe to talk, or I'm not invited as an elected official because you're unsafe of what I have to say, it's time for let law enforcement, they've heard the concerns, they are aware of the issues, to now go forward. But, you know, to feel personally attacked, and I understand that Robbie was, you know, in, life was had in our community, but at the same time, we want to move forward, not have retribution on individual office holders, and that we're trying to solve an issue in our community and to heal. And part of it is letting the officers who want to be part of the solution to have that time to bring back solutions that are doable and that can be potentially statewide changes that we can implement.
Thank you. Let me say one more thing.
I'm not a member of ACOP, but I do attend some of the meetings, and they're not all directed on frying any officials here. It really is about change. Yes, there's been a lot of things on social media, but most of the stuff that I have seen from them has not been just a slam on the elected officials. They have a lot of knowledge and they have a lot of research that they've been doing, and they have an incredible amount of intelligence within that group. So I really don't think it's fair to characterize them all as just attacking, because that's, that's not the case, and that's not what I hear. Yes, there's been some attacks. I, I, you know, and there's some of them on there, including one I'm related to that sometimes is a little bit more vocal than what I would prefer. And I have tried very hard to maintain my integrity throughout this whole situation. I guess one of my concerns as far as just having police officers is having seen what happens when they start covering for themselves. And that's what, in this situation, that's what gets you concerned when it's just police officers, and I know you can't address that, but I don't know that it's fair not to include anybody outside of that group to work on this, because we all have concerns, it's not just police officers, that are going to be able to look at our concerns, you know? I mean, they've always looked from the police officer perspective. That's, that's their profession, that's what they've always done. So how can they switch from that completely and look from the other perspective? I don't know. Maybe they can, but I, I don't have evidence of that so far.
I would say that that has not been my experience. Lots of the attacks have been ill-informed, and we have some, ours is limited, but others and at the county level have more understanding of what happened in this situation. And the liability pool, we don't hide behind them. I mean, I'm a citizen, that's why I ran for this position. I believe the government owes more openness to the citizens than we are apparently allowed to give. I don't really like making the decision between openness and financial liability, and if that's a false choice, there is BS. What I will say is that you have two law enforcement officers sitting in this room who are protecting your right to be here and be here safely, so that you can say whatever you want. And the hearing that we had in the courtroom was ugly, it was ugly. And I would just say try that in Singapore, try that in, you know, two-thirds of the countries in this world, and, and see how you get treated or what your First Amendment rights are. The fact of the matter is, please don't interrupt me.
I'm not going to.
A second. The fact of the matter is that there's an outcome that certain people want, maybe even that I want, but I can't make it happen. I, there are also processes that may or may not be, you know, in terms of the way the whole thing works, that may or may not be acceptable to some and maybe to others. The fact of the matter is, we're, our hands are more tied than you all think. And also, I got pretty attacked at that meeting, and it frustrated me a great deal, because a lot of people don't know me. The time that I rolled my eyes was because somebody was speaking for me, pure lies, and I, it's a public hearing, and I don't get to say that I never said that. So I rolled my eyes, and then I must be an insensitive son of a bitch, except that my family is full, I mean, I have five or six relatives that have serious mental illness. My sister, who graduated from Laramie High School, was, was homecoming queen and got one B in sophomore PE for skipping, because she was a normal kid, or she would have been valedictorian, has lived on the street for 20 years. And mental illness is not a lifestyle choice, like the law says it is. If a person can't realize they're mentally ill, if you break your arm, you know you need help. If your mind isn't right, you don't know that. So you don't get the choice. I was her guardian for a while, and I realized how hard it was to take care of her because I was really limited. So I sit there and listen to all of these things. You all are not as well-informed as you think, not about us, not about what we think, not about how much we want to resolve this situation in the appropriate way, and in the blanket maligning of law enforcement. Law enforcement does all kinds of really amazing things. A bunch of people in our sheriff's office are foster parents, and they're, they're putting out their meager incomes to take care of people who come from broken families, parents who beat them, mentally ill people. You can't categorize law enforcement as inhuman because, and I don't really understand it, because generally people of, of a certain political persuasion don't typically like All individuals in all situations are unique. The sheriff's department, the police department, the highway patrol, the campus police, the public doesn't know the difference from one law enforcement agency to another. So even if you really didn't like the sheriff's department, ACOP's rhetoric has caused the other law enforcement agencies in this community to suffer, because it's been so charged and, and so critical and in some ways inappropriately or misinformed. So everybody just needs to cool down. The reason that, that this should be populated by retired law enforcement officers.
Oh, I agree.
Is because they know what the limitations are that they're given. In the ideal world, we can all sit here and say, okay, cops should do this and cops should do that, and I don't know what a cop should do in very limited, you know, split seconds, or how much training, you know, carries through to instinct, or how or how much training, you know, carries through to instinct, or how much time you have to think, or what happens if you make the wrong decision. I don't know any of that stuff. I can acknowledge that, so my other sister, she is, has a master's degree, and she's married and has two kids, and her youngest just graduated from high school. She was so paranoid that she thought somebody was going to hurt her and her family, so she left her family. She lives on the street in the same town as they do. She's beautiful, smart, educated, accomplished, and when my niece and nephew drive down the street at lunch from school with their friends, they see their mother on the sidewalk, and they don't go see her. My brother-in-law takes her to breakfast every Saturday, and he doesn't divorce her. You guys don't know, you don't know shit, and you need to calm it down. You need to knock this shit off and let us do the process that we need to do. And quit accusing people of, of being insensitive or not understanding the plight.
I think that the point is here that you have to let us do our process, and we're going to choose a process, we're not excluding the public, but we're going to do a process. Sit tight, let the project, or the process work. And this has been the problem with this whole thing, is that people are not letting the process work.
There is no law enforcement officer in this entire county who is hunting you down or hunting anyone down. They put themselves at risk all the time, and these situations are not linear, they're not predictable.
And if I could just add something to kind of change the tone here.
Yeah, wow.
I want to kind of let you know, let you know that we handle a lot of the involuntary commitments into my office and what we see of law enforcement in action. I mean, and I would be, again, remiss if I didn't bring up, we had a law enforcement from the deputy's office that saved the life of a mentally ill person this past weekend that could have ended up in a tragic situation. And every day, law enforcement is interacting with mentally ill individuals and having to deal with it in, in a way, in a manner that is helpful to them and to others. So we need to continue those efforts, continue supporting law enforcement. I think Deb is working with the board right now, we're trying to implement CIT training, doing all kinds of positive things to try and get a mental health court, to try and help individuals so we don't see situations like we had with this particular shooting. So we need to work together, but right now, I believe, and I really submit to you unless you tell me otherwise, is that law enforcement, retired officers are going to come together, put together a recommendation and report, and they're going to consider and will be directed to involve the public as they see fit. It's just that I think it's time for law enforcement to have a voice and to come together. And I do have faith, knowing the situation statewide, that they're looking at the various types of interactions with mentally ill and how to handle it.
Well, I want to say that I think that's entirely appropriate for this reason. When you have multiple jurisdictions and processes, and law enforcement works with them every day, their strengths and their weaknesses, at least at the very beginning, it needs to start there so that, so that, so that there's a framework, a basic foundation or structure, when, so that then when the public is brought in, there's this, these things that they can see, here are the strengths, here are the weaknesses, here's where the roadblocks are, here's where the door opens, here's where, you know, because there's a lot of intricacies related to state law, federal law, funding, training, it's, it's massively complicated and challenging, and it's just something that isn't as simple as we wish that it would be.
When, excuse me, when we put together the CIT, it took us a year and a half to bring the community together. You know, the, the state took it away from NAMI and defunded the person that we had working with it, and, and there's been some more around the state, but not nearly as many. The CIT, and it talks all about that, and that's a police officer that put all this together, and, you know, the CIT International is an excellent group, that they're really working with police officers to do just exactly what you're talking about. I'm not, don't misunderstand me and me thinking that it shouldn't be police officers, because you're right, they know what the rules are, they know what the restrictions are. I was just saying that I felt like there need to be, needed to be some representation, not just police officers.
I agree. Later in the process--
Okay.
--once the foundation is laid, and you can kind of look at this.
Well, and, and the foundation has been laid with CIT International, so, you know, you may be, I, I understand where you're coming from, and, and just please realize that everybody that was out of line in that courtroom, were not members of A-COP. You know, just because they attended there, we don't have control of everyone that's in the room, you don't have control of them, somebody--
Yeah, we didn't even try.
Oh, no, I know you didn't. No, you didn't at all, you just listened.
And law enforcement did too.
You know, so--
I think they did.
I don't know how ugly that would have had to have gotten before somebody stepped in.
Right, but, you know--
But you can't do that anywhere.
Yeah.
In 80% of the countries in this world, you can't do that.
It was, it was inappropriate, we were trying to get him, there was plenty of us in the room that were trying to get him to knock it off. It, it wasn't the way any of us wanted it handled. We wanted to come and talk to you, A-COP wanted to come and talk to you. You know, as far as me having it filled with friends and family, that was kind of a joke, I didn't know most of them until this happened. But anyway, we appreciate you listening to us, you know, and yes, they say one in three have mental illness. So how, how are you not going to be touched by it?
It's a spectrum, am I 5% off the center or 50%?
Yeah.
But the point is, lots of people can function. What I want to say finally is that my sisters, I know that CIT training is a training, right? It gives you some tools, but every situation is different.
Sure.
So it's not the panacea that everyone would hope.
No.
In a, in a situation where a law enforcement officer has to make split-second decisions based on training and instinct, there's a possibility that something could go wrong. So law enforcement, people who are sober and sane have certain types of predictable behavior. People who are mentally ill or under the influence don't behave in those, in those behavior patterns. I'm not a law enforcement guy, but I know that. So they don't get very long to decide who they're dealing with and how to deal with them, and they have, law enforcement has my sympathy. And I say this knowing full well that the same thing that happened to Robbie could happen to one of my sisters or someone in my family, just because circumstances can be that way sometimes. If, if, if you're in an interaction with law enforcement, there's a certain way that it's supposed to go, and people who are under the influence or who are not mentally well don't behave in a predictable way, and then in very limited time, a law enforcement officer has to decide what, how to interact with that person. So I can, I can acknowledge that I may be faced with the same thing as you someday, and I am very sympathetic to you.
I, I believe that, I believe that, I believe you all are. You know, and, and unfortunately, there's so much anger and emotion around this because of the fear factor, and there's nothing we can do about that, and you have to go through your process, and obviously, you have not been given any controls to be able to do anything about it except what you're doing, so we thank you for that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to lay it a little bit. So I think that there's at least three pieces to this puzzle, right? And one of them is law enforcement, and one of them is mental health, and one of them is community. And I'm not sure why they can't work independently of each other and move together as some sort of committee, right? That takes the best practices from law enforcement, that takes the best practices from mental health in the community, and then meets together so that everybody feels heard. This law enforcement is just not this science, right? It's this trust, right? And, and although it might be the best practices in law enforcement, if the people being subject to those don't agree with it, well, then it's really not a reality. So why wouldn't you make a group of community people? Why wouldn't you make a group of mental health experts and a good group of former law enforcement people go out and say, these are the best things in those entities, let's meet together, and let's come up with a strategy that matters, right?
Which is precisely what Peggy is saying.
Well, I think, I'm not sure--
I am saying that, but you, is law enforcement, it, it's kind of like, law enforcement hasn't had a chance to come together on the issue, to talk it out. It's like everybody's forcing and, and you're not allowing the talking and the understanding and what are the demands. And quite frankly, you haven't been attacked on social media. You're not the one, every day, law enforcement's attacked on social media, to the point where you aren't going to get any healing anywhere. And I've been involved in a lot of projects to make a lot of change statewide for what we do for juveniles and on a lot of issues with mental illness, and I feel this is the best way to move forward. I can't even tell you right now, I can tell you right now, you go check out A-COP's tonight and how I'm attacked, and how every one of these cops get attacked, it gets to the point is, how can we be open to change when it's personal attacks versus policy? And I'm trying to stay focused on policy, I want to see a change, I want to see how we change statewide. But if you put the committee right now with these leaders of A-COPS and all of these individuals, you aren't going anywhere.
You're going to shut the whole thing down.
It's a good point, and the reason is--
May I say something, please?
I would like to say an example of what she just said, because this is really important. For months, A-COP was conflating the role of the, of the sheriff and the county attorney when they're actually adversarial. And that is like simple five-minute statutory research to understand that they are adversarial. And, and somehow, they got lumped into some months-long conversation where the county attorney is part of some cover-up when the fact of the matter is--
A conspiracy.
Yeah, and a conspiracy, when the fact of the matter is the county attorney doesn't investigate. The county attorney waits for, for the investigators, who are not the sheriff's department, because they don't get to investigate themselves, they wait for DCI to take all of the materials and evidence to Cheyenne and then return it back to her to decide what she's going to do with it. So when she knows nothing and can say nothing, she's supposed to say something, or else she's, or else it's a conspiracy. The, the if this, then this, then this, you know, the, the multiplication of errors when you start down a, a stream of logic fueled by the ACLU that's considerably, that has a, an agenda, a position. We don't have an agenda. We only can deal in facts, processes, rules. They limit us and they also free us, you know, but, but I can't go outside my box. I can't go on social media and say, no, you guys aren't, you're off of here and you're off there. There's stuff that, you know, so we play by the rules, but the public doesn't have to play by the rules. You say anything you want, informed, well-informed or not. And it's been really, really ugly and really, really misinformed. And A-COP, I have never seen a statement of humility or contrition out of A-COP over the, all of the mistakes that y'all have made. It's been egregious and terrible, and particularly the media. If the media asks for an answer that they can't have, they can't go trolling social media to write a, a news article, because that's not news, that's the National Enquirer, it's trash, tabloid, fake news. And I'm looking at the reporter, and he damn well knows it. He knows it, and he should write what I'm saying about him too. So anyway, say what you're going to say, but now you all know where I'm at with this. As far as having the citizens participate, it has to come after there's a basic organized framework for the conversation, or it's going to turn into a shit show like it already has been.
So that's why, right now, I think that putting someone from the public right now, until they've had an opportunity to get all of the research, all of the data, work with the university if need be, to get a report together, then involve the community after the officers have had, and retired officers have had an opportunity to vet the issues. They know what the issues are. And the problem is, you're, and you, and it makes it sound, Pete, that it's so simple to sit down, and it's not.
Well, look--
Y'all will be--
--they've been waiting till--
Y'all will be surprised at law enforcement's honesty, contrition, and humility. It'll amaze you, actually.
They have wonderful insights, they've got amazing insights. Go ahead, right now.
Thank you. What I've been wanting to say for 15 minutes is, I'm sorry, Heber.
Thanks.
I am sorry that you got yelled at. And I want to ask the same thing of all of you, that you are asking of us, which is, please draw some distinctions here. No leadership from A-COP attacked you in the hallway. That was not what happened. There is a subset of the public that has been showing up to very deliberately, very carefully educate ourselves, organize public comment, et cetera, that is what A-COP has been doing. And while it is true that we asked, we asked two people to not be at that forum in January, because we had specifically been told by people that they did not, they would not feel safe to speak were those people in the room, and that was you, Attorney Trent, and the sheriff. We had half a dozen law enforcement officers in the room for that. We have been trying all along to work cooperatively--
So they didn't feel safe if I went in there?
Yes, Peggy, I'm sorry for you to hear that. Look, I'm sorry that that is the reality, but you are not trusted by a lot of people in this community, and we are trying to nonetheless get people together and have conversation.
Who do you think is awfully behind the scene--
She's your advocate.
--trying to advocate for you?
So I just want to note, this is how the public is being treated right now. I am very calmly coming to you with that humility that you're asking to and telling you--
You know, I appreciate that--
--that we have been trying--
But it's disingenuous, because you don't police the content of your own website--
We can't police the internet anymore than you can police what people said in your meetings, we can't do that.
Well, social media is one thing, the A-COP website is another thing entirely.
Okay, well, I would love to sit down and actually talk to you about what you find offensive that's actually on the A-COP website, I would love to have that conversation--
I would not, I want to move forward and resolve that.
Okay. So let me say something that I think ties in with things that both Pete and Heber have said, which is, please do not turn the foundation of this work into an either-or. I want law enforcement's involvement with this. I think that, Peggy, you have a good instinct to say they should be in the conversation in a central way. That feels good to me. What doesn't feel good to me is that they are the only ones who are centrally involved with that, and I think that's what Pete was saying a minute ago, and I want to say, yes, we're not asking for the table, we're asking for a seat at the table. And that law enforcement only has one set of angles, and yes, they know what the current situation is better than anybody else, that expertise needs to be there. But they don't know what is and isn't working for the community right now, and that is the other piece that needs to be at the table with this. And so I would just ask, please don't turn this into an either-or, we are not trying to turn this into an either-or. We are trying to actually have this be something where voices that aren't usually heard, you know, we didn't get to craft 10 years ago what the sheriff's manual looked like, we're asking, can we start being part of that now? That is what the request is, and that is what A-COP is trying to stand for. And I know that it's hard as a public official to have people not trust you, I get that. You know, I had been in power in positions of leadership before, and I understand how difficult that is, and sometimes that's just the reality, and you have to work with it. And, Heber, I am sorry for the way that you were treated at the last meeting, but that was not A-COP that did that.
Just so you know, this is in power, it's only responsible--
I think it's both, Heber, it is both. And I get it that it feels like a major responsibility, particularly right now when your community is really upset with you, that it mostly feels like that responsibility, and it is both that you have.
So--
Thank you.
--you need to let the process work.
We're asking to be part of the process, Terry.
And we didn't exclude you.
Okay.
We'll let you, we'll, as the time comes, you'll be included. But right now, we want to put together law enforcement. Item 25, from vouchers for April 20, or April 2019.
Will be approved immediately.